The meeting will please come to order. This evening, President Congo will be presiding virtually. President Congo, are you ready to take the floor?
Yes, I'm ready. Thank you, Councilmember Harley. I want to thank everyone for joining us for this evening's meeting. Today is Thursday, July the 10th. I am Trippie Congo, President of Wilmington City Council. And again, we just want to thank everyone who is with us in council chambers and also everyone who is viewing virtually. We are going to begin with an opening prayer by Mary Alena Rivera.
Heavenly Father, we have assembled to handle the affairs of our city. As we do so, we ask for your guidance and understanding. We pray that our city reaches a place of peace and safety, keep us out of harm's way, and bless those who are in authority. Let respect be key in all of our, in all our endeavors. By this Hallelujah, nos hemos reunido para manejar los asuntos de nuestra ciudad. Al hacerlo le pedimos su orientación y comprensión. Oramos para que nuestra ciudad alcance un lugar de paz y seguridad, que nos mantenga fuera del peligro y bendicir a los que están en la autoridad. Que el respeto sea clave en todos nuestros esfuerzos. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. And now we have the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Just want to announce that a public comment will take place after legislative business. And for anyone who is virtual, there is a Google Form signup in the chat. Also, just also want to announce that the following legislation is being withdrawn by the sponsor. Councilmember Oliver is withdrawing her resolution to respectfully request the disposition of a lead paint tester to help initiate it incorporated. And also, the following legislation is being held by Councilmember McCoy in ordinance to amend Chapter 34 of the city code to allow residential tenants and city properties to deposit withheld rent in a city-held escrow account. And also, in ordinance to amend Chapter 34 of the city code to require landlords provide written notice of tenants' rights in leases. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Owens?
Here.
Councilwoman Darby, Councilwoman Oliver, Councilwoman Harley.
Present.
Councilwoman Willauer.
Here.
Councilwoman McCoy, Councilwoman Johnson.
Here.
Councilwoman Field.
Present.
Councilwoman Bracy, Councilwoman Cabrera.
Present.
Councilman Hackett.
Here.
Councilman Spadola. President Congo.
Here.
Eight, eight present and five absent.
And can you please announce the council members who requested to be absent this evening?
Councilmembers Oliver, McCoy, Bracy, and Darby. Councilman Spadola has just entered chambers, if you'd like to recognize him.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Spadola. Now we have the reading of the minutes of our previous meeting.
July 3rd, 2025, City Council met in regular session with remote participation on the above date at 6:32 PM. President Ernest M. Congo II presiding. The opening prayer was done by Mary Alena Rivera.
At this time, I move the minutes be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded and minutes be accepted as written on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. There are no committee reports this evening. Now, and we have the city treasurer's report.
July 10th, 2025, total investments $513,312,142.31. Total cash on hand, $15,324,719.94. Grand total, $528,636,862.25 submitted, City Treasurer Dwayne Sims.
I move the treasurer's report be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded report be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. I'll accept the motion to move to accept all non-legislative business.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to accept all non-legislative business on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. At this time, we will have our recognition resolutions. Councilmember Cabrera.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I would like to have Veronica Macalier and anyone who would like to join her, please come forward. Well, Ms. Macalier comes to the front, to the podium, and friends and family can come with her. That when I first met Ms. Veronica Macalier was during the time that the city introduced First Night. And we had Veronica Macalier School of Dance come all the way over here. Yes, I know, surprise. You know, she doesn't know what's going on. You're getting recognized for your years of service and everything you have done. Come forward, if you can all come right here behind the podium. Thank you.
Thank you for standing right here next to me. Because you'll say a few words after I read the resolution. Or someone else could say a few words.
So Ms. Veronica Macalier and her School of Dance has been involved with the city, different events, First Night events, and as well as when I was at the Grand Opera House. She also participated in our programs there. We need you right back here, okay? So at this time, we will read the resolution. This is sponsored by Councilmember Maria Cabrera. Whereas it is the sense of City Council to honor individuals and organizations who have demonstrated outstanding achievement and deserving of recognition and acknowledgement. Councilmember Maria de Cabrera recognizes Veronica Macalier and the Macalier-Paulson School of Irish Dance. And whereas, when Veronica Macalier immigrated from Belfast in 1967, she brought her love of traditional Irish dance with her. Originally founded in Ireland by Veronica's aunt, Alice Macalier. Veronica's Dance School has coached generations of children and adults in Irish dance and culture. For the past 58 years, Ms. Macalier has coached countless dancers, many of whom have gone on to compete and win in world championships in Ireland, North American Championships, and regional or chattas championships. And whereas, with years of experience in teaching, choreography, and expanded curriculum, the school's talented assistants are committed to making Irish dance an enriching part of the lives of their students and developing a growing community of Irish enthusiasts. Around St. Patrick's Day, students give back with their feet with performances for a wide range of audiences, including nursing homes, charity events, and alongside popular Irish bands. Whereas, as part of this special community, students are nurtured in their individual abilities, poise, and self-confidence while cultivating a love of Irish culture. In addition to dance lessons, the school cultivates supportive learning and lasting friendships among students, parents, and teachers. Ms. Macalier's impact on her students is clear. Formerly known as the Macalier School of Irish Dance, last year, the school added the name Paulson to its name to recognize the contributions of Eileen Paulson, who was transitioned from a student of the school into a business partner. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Wilmington that this council is pleased to recognize and celebrate Ms. Veronica Macalier and the Macalier-Paulson School of Irish Dance. Job well done. Veronica, we would like you to say a few words.
I'm just shocked. I wish I'd have been dressed better. I didn't know anything about this. But I thank you for all. It's my pleasure. I love, love the Irish dancing, always did since I was five years old in Belfast when I danced. And I think I have the greatest, greatest parents that any teacher could ever have in my school. They're just wonderful to me, wonderful. Thank you, Eileen. Eileen came aboard after I got COVID very bad. We would have lost everything only for Eileen. She came aboard, took over, till I was strong to do with her. So, thank you. I'm just shocked. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cabrera. Thank you all so much for this recognition. Veronica has been a female run business for 58 years, so that is amazing. I was one of her first students, and Kathleen back here, Kathleen Fahey-Hosey was also another one, Tricia Burke, some of her current students, Molly's a lawyer downtown, and she still dances with us. We're definitely putting Delaware on the map in the world of Irish dance. We just turned for, returned from Washington DC at the National Harbor, and we won, in the history of the school, our second national championship title for a little girl who's under 13. She lives in Lewis. So she was eighth in the world this year, and she just took home the national championship. So thank the community for all your support you give my dancers and Veronica's dancers. We appreciate it so much. Thank you.
All right, thank you. In the way of other recognitions, Councilmember Nathan Field would like to recognize Mary T. Barksdale on her 101st birthday. Councilmember Harley would like to recognize Jamar Rami. And also, she would like to recognize Apostle Thomas Wesley Weeks Sr. on his 80th birthday. And Councilmember McCoy would like to recognize Joseph C. Smoker on his 80th birthday. And for sympathy resolutions, all of council recognizing Judith Young and also Councilmember Oliver would like to have a sympathy resolution for Maurice Xavier Barrett. Councilmember Kobe Owens?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, we lost a member of our team not too long ago, so I would like to request a moment of silence in the memory of Ms. Jennifer Roberts. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will go to public comment. I'm going to ask if Councilmember Harley will manage our public comment this evening?
Yes, Mr. President, I will do that. All right, so our first person tonight is Deacon Earl Tate. Mr. Tate? Please watch your step, Deacon Tate.
Good afternoon, or good evening. My name is Deacon Earl E. Tate, who is never late because he don't want to lose his pair of roller skates. And, and I'm here, and I'm here to, to say, speaking as a senior, as a senior myself, a senior homeowner, and, and I would like to say this. We, the seniors of Wilmington, would like to know how, who to get in contact with for a grant, for a grant to fix up our house because, because we don't want to move out of the house and we don't want to move into no nursing home where we soon be forgotten and, and where, and where, and where there used to be a lot of people coming in to see us that didn't stop, didn't cease from being. And, and it's nobody there but, but, but us. We, we would like, we would like to know, who do we see to get, to get a grant, to get our house fixed up so, so that we can live there in peace and in harmony with, with our neighbors? Because we don't want no loan, because, because a loan mean, mean that you have to be digging in your pocket, be paying it back. But, 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 but we would like, we would like to have the windows fixed and everything so, so that, so that we, so that we can live there in peace and harmony. Because, 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 because we say this. You are gonna, you are gonna be in our shoes one day. So, so you are gonna, so you're gonna wanna, want, want to have, want to have the home that, that you can live in and, and not, and not a nursing home where, where you had to be, where you had to be taking, taking pills and everything. But, but you want to live, you want to live, live in your home peacefully. So, so like, so, so like, that's, that's what I say. Remember, think. He who thinks negatively had defeated himself even before he begun. But he who thinks positively with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding can claim the victory by faith. And it's all setting forth new goals and climbing higher heights that life hold no limit to it. So remember, you think, you think about it, think about it, and then, then do, then do it. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tate. Yes. All right. Our next person is Ms. Rebecca Winward, and I just want to remind you that you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Winward. I'm speaking tonight to support Councilmember Darby's ordinance to amend the city code regarding the land bank. This ordinance will create more transparency, oversight, and accountability, which we can all agree is necessary, as was discussed at last week's meeting. The councilmembers who voted against dissolving the land bank said that you wanted reform. So this is the way to do it. This is the first step. I really hope you can continue the work that you've promised to do. And also, to keep in mind that this is not where the work stops for holding the land bank accountable nor for affordable housing. There is still crisis for rent and affordable housing. So we need to keep the pressure on for protecting affordable housing and home, for both homeowners and for renters. I'm also happy to see more of you in person tonight, and I really hope to continue to see that. And I hope that the work is being done outside of the meetings as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Rotate, so at this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Daisy Rivers, who is on virtually. You can speak at this time. Ms. Daisy Rivers? Okay, I'll come back to Ms. Rivers. Our next person is Mr. Jaquim Mohammed. Watch your step, sir.
Peace and blessings. My name is Jaquim Mohammed, and I am going to give a quick support for affordable housing here in Wilmington. As we move on in this political theater, based upon the lack of persons that are here today, and I hear today that we have a lot of council people here today. But the other council people that don't come to these meetings are living in an alternate universe. They're not living in Wilmington, Delaware. I have no idea where they are. It's a part-time job. You should be here every time. I am not satisfied with as many council people that are here today. I think you, every time we have a meeting here, you should be here. Now, my alternate universe, the universe I live in, is called Wilmington, Delaware. And to have affordable housing here in Wilmington, Delaware is necessary. Y'all see what's happening. Y'all know what's happening. You see the gentrification. You know the gentrification is coming. It is up to you to stop it. It is up to you to put it to a reasonable, reasonable, well, well, we can't say, a reasonable amount of affordable housing in this city. And our state is being inundated with it. I live in Dunleith. I have no representation here, but I pay taxes here for Wilmington. Our water system comes from Wilmington. And we've got an increase a number of years ago with taxation without representation. We need to do something else about all the other, of other neighborhoods in that's part of the greater Wilmington area that does not have representation in this body of government. We need to do something about that. Second, what's happening with the land bank is ridiculous. Y'all should be ashamed of yourselves. And anybody here, notwithstanding the council president, because I know the council president wanted to be here. But all of y'all need to be here on every doggone meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed. The next person is Maggie Messenger. She's on virtually. Ms. Maggie Messenger? Okay, we're going to go to the next person, Ms. Lourdes Rivera.
I'm here.
Okay. Please, Ms. Maggie, you can go, and Ms. Lourdes, you'll be next. Thank you. The floor is yours.
Okay, I am in support of the measures being taken on amending the city code to reform the land bank for now. New leadership is sorely needed, particularly to us because the majority of those now serving on the land bank were recipients of all the communications our group sent regarding the mishandling of Gibraltar. That was five years' worth of communications. And only one member of the board acknowledged those communications or engaged in discussion with us. So it was a shock when they voted to oversee the $3 million budget for this parcel. We also strongly urge the city to request that a formal audit of the last three years of the land bank's books be done by the Delaware State Auditor Lydia York. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Messenger. Ms. Lourdes, you can come at this time.
Good evening, President, and all of you in council tonight. My name is Lourdes. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm already a homeowner, but I care a lot about my neighborhood and my community. I have seen that the Wilmington land banking is very hard for regular people to access. The process is not easy or accessible for working-class family. I know many people who have tried to buy home through the land banking, but they said they are not qualified, or it goes for people who are from out of the state. Or they have preference that from people, they have more preference than from people from the community. The land banking should make it easier for people who live here to stay here. The system should work for Wilmington family, not just for investors or people with quick cash. We need programs that help neighborhood buy home together. We need training and support to have more people understanding how to buy and keep their homes. And we need to build a community in Wilmington, a stronger, more stronger community. I hope Mayor Kearney and City Council will work to fix the land banking and make it fair and open for everyone. This is not just about a building. It's about protecting family and stopping displacement. We need transparency, and for that, we need to be able to trust who is running land banking. That's why I also still, even though it's been already in the past, but I still support rent stabilization. If people cannot buy their home, we need to make sure that they can afford to stay in the home they are renting right now. Or that they have the possibility to even buy that home, if it's a possibility. And maybe land banking would be able to help that family, like stepping stone is doing it right now for community that I know of people that are being able to buy a home through this program. Maybe they put money in that program. Once the land banking is so hard to get through, or people that are trying, that we have people that have come here and they're saying that they are very getting very hard to buy this home. Why? Why is getting hard for us, not me personally, but why is getting hard for people to buy homes? people to buy homes here in Wilmington? And we know people in my community that are more eligible from out of the state. I don't understand that. That's why that we need to make sure that they can afford to stay in their home. We need both affordable home, home and chip and fair rent policy to keep our family here, where, in Wilmington, Delaware. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera. Next, Ms. Cheyenne Miller. Okay, I'll go to the next person, Mr. Brandon Fletcher.
Good evening, Council President Congo, Chairwoman Harley, and members of Wilmington City Council. My name is Brandon, and I'm here to speak in strong support of Ordinance 44, which would create a voluntary rent escrow program, and Ordinance 86 to strengthen oversight of the Wilmington land bank. I think these are both common sense housing policies that move us in the right direction. Rent escrow empowers tenants to be able to safely deposit withheld rent when landlords don't make critical repairs for things like heat, hot water, and basic, um, basic safety. It creates a neutral, city-held process for tenants to ensure that they're protected and that landlords have documentation for funds available, and that it's a fair, balanced tool that protects good-faith renters and creates transparency in housing disputes. This is not a radical idea. It's a practical one, and I strongly encourage all members of council not only to support this ordinance, but to co-sponsor it as a show of leadership and unity on tenant protections. Similarly, Ordinance Number 86, I think, brings real oversight to the land bank, which has been operating for years with limited transparency and inconsistent community engagement. I think that this ordinance ensures that the land bank meets the goals it's created for, like equitable housing development, community revitalization, and not just transferring properties without public accountability. But I also want to speak to a broader conversation we've been having in this chamber, especially around rent stabilization. One of the arguments raised against rent stabilization earlier this year was that the city is already doing enough through its neighborhood stabilization efforts, including through funding the land bank. And while efforts like the land bank are important, in their current frame, they are not enough. Stabilizing neighborhoods means stabilizing the people who live in them. If rents keep rising unchecked, if working families are forced out, then what exactly are we stabilizing? Is it empty homes, new developments, neighborhoods without neighbors? Rent stabilization, along with tools like rent escrow and land bank reform, is what creates a full picture of housing justice. It's how we keep people housed while we invest in long-term development. It's not either or, it's both end. So tonight, I urge you to, um, to pass and co-sponsor Ordinance 44 and Ordinance 86, and keep pushing forward on policies like rent stabilization that ensure Wilmington families, Wilmington remains a city where working people and families can live with dignity, safety, and a fair shot at stability. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. Ms. Cheyenne Miller?
Hi, my name is Cheyenne Miller, um, with the Homes Campaign, and want to also come and speak in support of the rent escrow legislation. I know it's not up for today, but I do think it's important, um, that we come and speak on it. For several years, we've been working to try to get the state legislature to change the way that it does withholding laws. Right now, currently, it's very difficult for renters to be able to withhold their rent. And even if they did try to withhold their rent, there's no place to put it. And so, for the city to revamp the escrow program, signals to the state that we are thinking about rental properties, renters, and making sure that they're able to live in these quality properties. And if they're not able to, that they have an opportunity to hold their rent in escrow, where it's safely there, where both the landlord and the tenant know that it will be accessed once the property gets fixed up. We know that this is a piece of legislation that has been worked on for a really long time, and we thank Councilmember Yolanda McCoy for all the work that she put into it, and we also hope that you guys will support it. I also want to speak about the land bank reform setup. While I am disappointed about the fact that we weren't able to push through legislation that would have changed the land bank and pushed it back into the city, I do think it's important that we start to look at the reforms that could happen to the land bank, and this legislation is a first step towards that. So I hope that you guys will support it when it comes up for its third and final reading. Again, I know we just said this, but these are all great reforms. We love them. We want to see them happen, but we also needed rent stabilization. And to see that there is constant delay with the reforms that are happening with the land bank and the reforms that are happening with escrow, and to know that this body decided not to vote yes on rent stabilization, it just gives us a lot of disappointment. And so, the city can't continue to wait for affordable housing. The city can't continue to wait for you guys to stand up for it. We need to make sure that we actually are doing something to help the city. And so, we urge you guys to actually take this more seriously, take affordable housing more seriously, so that we're able to be able to have some type of solution that actually helps people here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Thank you very much. Um, we had a Ms. Daisy Rivers earlier. I called your name, and you wasn't there. Are you there now, Ms. Daisy Rivers? Okay. All right. Well, that's all that we have for public comment on tonight. I want to thank everyone for sharing your comments. And at this time, Mr. President, I'm gonna turn it back over to you.
All right. Thank you very much. Now, we will move to...
I'm sorry, President Congo. Someone is saying something. Okay, all right. President, someone in the audience said that their name is on the sign-up sheet. So, if it's okay, President, for me to let this person speak?
Yes. Yes, it is. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Sorry about that, sir. Mr. Patrick Mead?
I'm here today to speak because various councilmembers sitting on this council conducted a meeting of a public body as defined by the Delaware Freedom of Information Act by conferring with five people that are members of this board to quote, "immediately or specifically change any public official, body, or agency, or to advise, or make reports, investigations, or recommendations." They held this meeting with a former mayor. I'm here today because I submitted a Freedom of Information Act request to the city of Wilmington and was denied that Freedom of Information Act request despite the Delaware law stating that any public meeting held must have minutes recorded and available for public inspection and public comment. It's notable that the Delaware Freedom of Information Act's stipulation on open meetings stipulates an enforcement code that would, uh, any member that violates the Freedom of Information Act's stipulation on open meetings would be required to forfeit their yearly salary for their council seat. I'm here today to publicly call on the Department of Justice to investigate this body for violating the Delaware Freedom of Information Act. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mead. Thank you for that. Hey, um, Mr. President, I'm gonna turn it back over to you.
All right. Thank you. And again, we want to thank everyone who gave public comment on virtually and in council chambers. At this time, we will move to legislative business, Councilman Johnson.
Yes, Mr. President. I have a resolution to present on your behalf.
Resolution 25-047, Agenda Number 0085. Whereas the Police Officer Standards and Training Commission post, under its authority provided by 11 Delaware C. 8404 mandates that establish either individually or in combination with other departments, police accountability committees...
At this time, I, I move that the resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea, nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. The resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea, nay vote. On the question?
Uh, good evening, Mr. President. This is President on your behalf. And actually, I, I would like to be added as a co-sponsor. I thought I was already on there. This is a, a, appointing, it's been a long time coming, but it's appointing the members to the Police Accountability Committee Board, the PAB Board, and it was the Citizens Complaint Review Board. It's the newest iteration of that board that we passed back in 2020, um, in Session 107. And there's been a lot of movement and justice reform. It's a state level. Then we had to amend the city code to be in compliance with the state code. Now there is a statewide police practices board, so now we are in compliance with the state code. This is essentially appointing members in the, um, in conjunction with the mayor. We've conferred, and we, uh, the, the idea is to submit the names of former councilmember Albert Mills, Bishop Thomas Weeks, Jennifer Tompkins, and Hanifa Shabazz on behalf of the mayor's office. And on behalf of city council, appointed by you, council president will be Darrell Chambers, Andrea Hale Nichols, and Nicholas Brock. So I believe some of the individuals are here, and I appreciate them supporting this initiative. This is a landmark, um, body that will be not only helping to improve police practices, but also giving advice and guidance into how our police department can serve our citizens better. So I'm happy to have worked on with this with you, council president, and also Councilwoman Darby. This board is gonna have an impact. They are gonna be a paid board. Actually, that's gonna be important. They're gonna be paid for their time. They're gonna be trained, and they're going to work with us. So, I believe the first meeting should be sometime, I guess, by the end of the summer. And then we look forward to getting updates from the board. And we hope everyone is supportive of this initiative and actually participates in the meetings once they have meetings.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Harley, I'm gonna ask you to manage the comments from councilmembers throughout this evening's legislative business, please.
Yes. Yes, Mr. President. Right now, I would like to speak. I don't see anyone's hands up right now. But first of all, I want to piggyback off of Councilmember Johnson's remarks in terms of this being a long time coming. And I would also like to be a co-sponsor, Mr. President, as it relates to this particular piece of legislation. Looking at the names here, I definitely am very excited about those that have been appointed, which I know all the ones that I'm familiar with are very community-oriented, and I really believe that they would be very much an advocate for what we are trying to accomplish. So, thank you for moving this along. And again, I would like to be added as a co-sponsor. That's all I have, Mr. President. And Councilmember Hackett?
Thank you, Chair. I just had a question. Um, as I, you know, read through this, and I heard Councilman Johnson say that this is a paid board, what's the fiscal impact to sponsor? Anybody can let me know.
Madam Chair, do you want me to answer?
Oh, I'm going to defer to you, Councilmember Johnson.
Uh, just, just briefly, Councilman Hackett. Uh, I don't have the full piece of legislation. We actually passed it last term. I believe the fiscal impact, it's, I believe it's like $100 a meeting. So I'm not sure what the overall fiscal impact is, but it was already accounted for in our budget. In the budget we passed this year, we also have funding for both the training and compensation of the board members.
Can I get a follow-up?
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to know, uh, if we're gonna vote on this tonight, is there any way to make amendment that is added on here? Uh, we're gonna be voting on this. Just wanted to make sure that that's added to fiscal impact.
Uh, yes.
Madam Chair, I can, and you are the chairwoman of finance. I don't believe this would be a fiscal impact. So, the, it's already been passed. It's in codified. So this is just appointing the members. So there is no fiscal impact legally. And again, law department can step in, but there's not a fiscal impact to this.
My comment would be that I think once we, you read the first piece of legislation, that's the companion piece, I do understand what you're saying is valid.
Yeah, no, valid. I get what he's saying.
Yeah. Okay. You good?
No, yeah. No, I just get what he's saying. I'm just saying I, go ahead. I move forward. But, go ahead.
All right. I think, looking at the first piece of legislation, we'll take it from there.
Agreed.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes, thank you. Um, just wanted to say that seeing the members that are being appointed to this board, they are trusted community leaders, and I too would like to be added as a co-sponsor. It's been a long time coming.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Owens?
Yes. Um, first, I want to say that in 2020, when many activists pushed for more transparency when it comes to policing, um, we did not get exactly what we wanted. This came from some of those reforms, though, on the state level. We've seen the counties and a few other municipalities go into effect. Um, I do know a lot of the people on, who's being appointed to this, and I know that they bring a wealth of knowledge to this. So I do hope that this gives a great opportunity for more transparency and accountability when it comes to policing and community relations here in the city of Wilmington. But there is one name on here who, because of where I work, is a conflict of interest. So tonight, I will be voting present on this piece.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Owens. Council President, there are no other hands raised at this time.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. Any closing remarks?
I, I'll just call for a vote at this time. Thank you.
All right. Please call for the roll.
Councilman Owens?
President?
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Willauer?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilman Hackett?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Eight yays, four absent, and one present.
Declared adopted. Councilmember Willauer, I believe you are presenting on behalf of Councilmember Darby.
Mr. President, on behalf of Councilwoman Darby, I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance 25-036, Agenda Number 0086. An ordinance to amend Chapter 2 of the city code regarding oversight, transparency, and accountability of the Wilmington Neighborhood Conservancy Land Bank Corporation and appointment of a director.
First reading of the ordinance?
An ordinance to amend Chapter 2 of the city code regarding oversight, transparency, and accountability of the Wilmington Neighborhood Conservatory Land Bank Corporation and appointment of a director.
Mr. President?
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Community Development and Urban Planning Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. That be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Community Development and Urban Planning Committee. May I continue?
Mr. President, on behalf of Councilwoman Darby, I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance 25-037, Agenda Number 0087. An ordinance to amend Chapter 2 of the city code to increase support and accountability of neighborhood planning councils.
First reading of the ordinance?
An ordinance to amend Chapter 2 of the city code to increase support and accountability of neighborhood planning councils.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Community Development and Urban Planning Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. That be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Community Development and Urban Planning Committee. Thank you, Councilmember Willauer. Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes. Mr. President, I have a resolution to present.
Resolution 25-048, Agenda Number 0089. Whereas the city of Wilmington is an entitled, entitlement community for purposes of the Community Development Block Grant Program, the Home Investment Partnership Program, the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, and the Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Program. And whereas the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development regulations require a consolidated application process for funds for the CDBG program, the HOME program, the ESG program, and the HOPWA program. And whereas on June 6, 2024, City Council adopted Resolution 24-029, which approved the city's annual action plan for the city fiscal year 2025, federal fiscal year 2024, the CFY 25, FFY 24 plan, and authorized the mayor to submit it to HUD. And whereas... And whereas-
Resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea-nee vote.
Second.
It's been properly received, been properly moved and seconded to the resolution to receive, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea-nee vote. On the question?
As stated um, uh, by the clerk, as she was reading um, the resolution, this is an amendment that has to be uh, filed uh, with the changes uh, that we're making. Basically, there was a three hundred thousand dollars of C D B G program funds from the Jump Start Program. And they're being moved to the demolition of eight seventeen West Fourth Street, which has been declared unsuitable for rehabilitation and must be demolished. Um, and changes for the location of a home program project for West Staten to a different scattered sites. Um, so we do have to file this amendment, uh, since it is a change from what the original, um, the original information that was sent in.
Councilmember Harley, are there any comments from any councilmembers?
Not at this time. Um, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilman Owens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Willauer?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilman Hackett?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Nine yays and four absent.
Mr. President, I have a-
Declared adopted.
Thank you, sorry. Mr. President, I have a resolution to present.
Resolution twenty-five dash zero four nine, agenda number zero zero nine zero. Whereas the city of Wilmington is an entitlement community for purposes of the Community Development Block Grant Program, the Home Investment Partnerships Program, the energy, Emergency Solutions Grant Program, and the Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Program.
And whereas- This resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea-nee vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, the resolution to receive, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea-nee vote. On the question?
Uh, yes, Mr. President and colleagues. This resolution is authorizing the mayor to file with the U.S. Department of Housing or one, or his designee, which would be the Department of Real Estate and Housing, um, to file with the Department of Housing and Urban Development the following plans regarding funding for the Community Development Block Grant Program, the Home Improvement Investments Partnership Program, the Emergency Solutions Grants Program, and the Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Program, the city fiscal year twenty twenty-six through twenty thirty, and fiscal year twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-nine consolidated plan, the city fiscal year twenty twenty-six, federal fiscal year twenty twenty-five annual action plan, and the city participation plan for the city. This is something we do every um, five years when it comes up.
There are no hands raised at this moment, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilman Owens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Willauer?
Present.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilman Hackett?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Eight yays, one present, and four absent.
Declared adopted. That does conclude all of our legislative business for this evening. Now, we will go to petitions and communications, starting with Councilmember Owens.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I have a lot to talk about tonight. Um, on August the second, we have a community yard sale um, with the Northwest Civic Association. Again, come, feel free to stop by. Um, that is Thirty-first Street all the way to Lee Boulevard, um, between Washington and Market Street. Also, over in the first district, we have the North Side Farmers Market every Thursday at Haynes Park, um, four to seven P M. Come get some fresh fruit, vegetables, and some other goods over there as well, too. And since we are about to go on summer break, um, we have a uh, back-to-school um, week going on at the Powell Center on Monday, the eighteenth, is Motivational Monday, a panel discussion about success stories, a youth entrepreneur expert, eh, expo on the nineteenth, on the twentieth, Hall Pass Hoops Basketball Tournament, on the twenty-first, which is, I believe, our next council meeting, a youth concert and Jim Jam. Um, and then on the twenty-second, that Friday, um, at the Christina Skating Ring, a roll night, skating night. Um, and then that Saturday, the twenty-third, um, the Dreams in the Bag Bookbag Giveaway. Also, on the fifteenth of this month, um, One Village Alliance will be celebrating their fifteenth-year anniversary. So congratulations to them. Sorry, I had so much. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Harley?
Mr. President, I don't have any announcements to make, but I just want to say to all of my council colleagues, um, as we conclude tonight to go on recess, have a safe and relaxing time off. I also want to say to our constituency that have come out, um, this first part of our session, thank you for sharing your comments, thank you for reaching out. We want you to continue to let us know, um, what it is that you would like to see happen, your suggestions, because we really do want to work together to improve the quality of life for our citizens here in the city of Wilmington and all eight districts. So again, have a, a relaxing time and and really get some rest to each and every one of my council colleagues. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Willauer?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
I have no items tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Field?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Cabrera?
Thank you. I disconnected myself last week and I wanted to share the Wilmington City Cinema. I was talking to myself, when I realized I wasn't on the meeting anymore. So I just want to remind folks that our Wilmington City Cinema is happening. It's an evening of family-friendly snacks, games, and movie fun. Um, tonight, since it's just starting to get dark, at Kishusku Park, Insight Out Two is being shown. On Thursday, July seventeenth, this will be adults only at the Urban Artists Exchange Amphitheater Creed Three. On Thursday, July thirty-first, Mufasa at the Seventh Street Bridge. On August seventh, if, at East Lake Park, and August thirteenth, Wicket at Rodney Square culminates the series. Um, it is a fun time to be outside, uh, like the days of old and watch a movie outdoors. Also, want to um, that you know that the concerts in Old Brandywine Village at the Plaza kicked off this Tuesday. Unfortunately, they weren't able to perform because of the thunderstorms. But these concerts do take place every Tuesday from five to eight P M. Brandywine Plaza is right across from where the Dollar Store is, where Market Street, entrance to Old Brandywine Park, Superfine Lane, that area right there. That will have live bands, um, an assortment of performances, food trucks, children's in- um, information fun, Bubble the Bubble Man, face painting. Uh, there'll be local fresh produce for sale. So it's just a great time for families um, to come together. And of course, a reminder for um, folks to please use common sense when it comes to the heat. Uh, don't leave your animals, your children inside locked cars. Um, if you need help, the fan program is still going on for any seniors that are sixty-five and older, as long as you did not get a fan last year, you can still um, get a fan to help alleviate. Um, and just be, you know, careful of your surroundings, especially if you're near water with children. Um, you hear about so many tragedies that happen, uh, when it's supposed to be a fun time of year. Um, and just take advantage of the activities and the funds and the festivals that are going to be happening throughout the summer. That's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Cabrera. Council-
Thank you. Councilmember Hackett?
Nothing for tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Spadola?
Nothing tonight, Council President.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
I would just like-
Mr. President, could I, could I have another turn?
Sure. Councilmember Willauer?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Um, I just wanted to um, announce that there will be a um, public forum on housing stability this Saturday from five to seven P M. at the Hicks Anderson Community Center. Um, the panel will be on uh, rent stabilization, um, and the, and housing policy. So it, this is an open forum. There'll be a panel and then also an opportunity for discussion. It's free. Um, it's sponsored by um, Amana Social Services. And um, I hope everybody who has any questions wants to get involved in um, the discussion will come down at five P M. on Saturday to the Hicks Anderson Community Center. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'm sorry.
As was them.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. May I add one more thing that I forgot?
Sure. Councilmember Cabrera?
Uh, West Side Grows, just want to remind you that they do have the market over at Cool Springs Park every Wednesday starting at three P M. They also have activities, um, fun things to do. That's every Wednesday. Um, in addition, there are the summer concerts in the park. Oh, shoot, I forgot there was one more thing. Well, I can't remember that one, but, uh, oh, Open Streets and Play Streets. Uh, please check uh, the calendar because you're going to have a lot of activities happening uh, throughout the summer in different neighborhoods, and we want people to come out and enjoy. Thanks.
Thank you. And so again, we just want to thank everyone who joined us this evening, everyone who was in council chambers, also everyone who was watching virtually. Um, even though we are about to go on our summer break, we will still be accessible and available. Our offices will still be open, so please reach out to us if we can help in any way at three zero two, five, seven, six, twenty-one, forty. Again, our number is three zero two, five, seven, six, twenty-one, forty. And with that, I will accept the motion to adjourn.
Council President? Um, Councilmember Spadola had his hand up. I think he wants to make an announcement.
I just wanted to congratulate the newly engaged council president.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, thank you. And with that, I will accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded to adjourn on our favor signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night.